Good evening. It's now at 7:00 PM. I'd like to call this meeting in the Lakeville Planning Board to order. It is Thursday, October, I'm sorry, August 25th, 2022. We're meeting at the Lakeville Police Station Meeting Room. Lake Cam is recording this meeting. If anybody else is recording this meeting, please state it. That said, we have a quorum full board and our first item on the agenda is a continued site plan review of Tach Vega's 310 Kenneth Welch Drive. So at this time, if you guys state your name and give us the update.
Sure. I'm Terrence Russell with Epstein Global out of Chicago, 600 West Fulton Street.
Yes, Ricardo de Rojas. I'm joined by my partner, George Adams, with TAC Vega MA LLC, proud owners of the 310 Kenneth Welch Drive.
I just lost my, my sharing. Yeah, no, it disappeared. The entire screen did. Just quit. Okay. You're with me? So a few things that I'd like to start the meeting off with from, from the last time that we met in July. There are a number of comments that were made that I wanted to address, which helped us in coming up with a new design. But there was actually some misinformation that was discussed and it has to do with the number of required parking places for each of the tenants. So what we're looking at essentially is between 100 and 125 per tenant. So that would be a maximum of 250 spots and a minimum of about 210. So we did show 208 spots at the, at the last meeting. It was discussed that there might be as many as 300 spots required and right now that's, that's not correct. But we did take all the comments into account. And as you'll see on the plan, if you haven't already seen it, is that we did figure out a way to get 250 spots on the plan. It involves more wetland remediation work and it does increase the, the site coverage from the 73% they were looking at to just under 77% site coverage. So one of the other things that, that came up was the parking along Kenneth Welch Drive and your displeasure with the tenants parking along there. So I immediately when I got back, I contacted the building owners and they actually did send out notices to each tenant telling them that it was not allowed by the city and they should not do that. Ricardo, I don't know if you want to expound on that at all.
Sure. Through our property management team, we've specifically instructed and sent notifications to the tenants, the fact that they are not allowed to park in these areas. And I, we believe the new site plan asked presented is going to help alleviate that significantly, if not eliminate it altogether.
Right. So these, these were the notices that were sent out by the management company, Peregrine. This one went to Northeast Alternatives and a duplicate letter was sent to Jushi requesting that nobody parks along Kenneth Welch Drive. And their particular section in their lease was referenced. So the building owner's been making efforts to, to curb that. One of the, okay. So one of the other things that, that did come up was how will the building owner respond to either future growths in, in employee count? And what will they do to, to mitigate the parking issue? So again, Ricardo and, and George sent me actually parts of the tenant leases that stipulate the amount of parking that each tenant is allowed on site. So anything that's above that amount, they are required to find offsite parking or some other means to, to deal with it on their own. So that's actually part of the lease agreement with the tenants.
That's correct.
So regardless, you know, I said, we still wanted to make a, a good faith effort in getting, see what we could do to maximize parking. And so what we were able to do, we found, we were able to find some additional spots. So if we go from, from east to west, so this, this portion of the plan essentially remains the same. So we're on the Jushi side. This is, this is the same. We actually did not count these spots along here. I think there's seven. So we included those for Jushi. Those will be paved current either gravel. And there are some additional spots here currently. They're unstriped. There was some equipment up here previously. So we didn't count it. The equipment has now been removed and so we will come in and include an additional five or six spots. It looks like we have five here, but there is actually a little, little extra. So that gives Jushi about 96 spaces total.
How many employees do they have?
Again, they're between the 100 and the 125.
Single shift?
Per shift. That's, well, let's, let's finish through this because I, I see where you're going with the question.
Yeah, finish up.
On there. So what we were able to do over on the Northeast Alternative side is that we had essentially 101 spaces. If we look at increasing the site coverage, this dotted line is the, it's the 100 year floodplain, I believe, existing floodplain. It's a little, little tough to read. So we're not into the floodplain, but we can actually pick up an additional 40 spots of parking over here. So total, we're looking at 250 spaces. Jushi would have about 109, NEA would have 141. It would be again, up to the landlord to, you know, divvy these up, I guess, per the lease agreement. But the goal was to get 250 spots onsite without building a garage, without doing anything extraordinary and staying within the confines of the, of the floodplain. The, the issue we have obviously is that we have more wetlands to, to replace. So the objective, hopefully tonight, would be to at least give us the go ahead to pursue this. We do have other consultants on board. We had the wetlands redelineated per Mark's direction with Goddard Consultants. We have a lot, a landscape architect on board who, once we provide the new layout, will be able then to update the landscape plan. And we're also currently working on the stormwater issues. Stormwater is, is fairly involved for the state of Massachusetts. So before we invest a lot of time and effort into that, I want to know if, if we're on the right track, if we have the blessing to proceed and, and pursue this, pursue this design further with engineering.
Okay. Fair to say that concludes your presentation of the changes to the plan?
Correct.
So to go back to my question, I guess it boils to the second question. On the Northeast Alternatives end of the building, what's their employee count compared to the 141 spaces? Proposed long-term or current?
It's, you know, their maximum right now is 125, is what we're told. And on that particular side of the site, and it just, you know, it's a function of geometry, they have 140 spaces, 141 spaces on that site.
So they have a few extras. Jushi needs a few extras when they're full shift.
Correct. There's at least off-street parking available. You know, it may mean some people will have to walk a little bit further.
Yep. So, I mean, I, and you listened to our comments. I appreciate what you did. I guess I'm going to turn it over to the rest of the board. Peter, do you have any comments?
So has this been to the ZBA yet?
No.
Not even once yet? They're waiting for us to?
We had a joint meeting.
Okay.
And they're on the agenda for the meeting in September, which would be the 13th.
The 15th, I think.
Thursday is the second.
I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of this personally. I, I know it's, it's getting, it's getting pretty full. I mean, it's full, but if this solves the problem and, because they're getting to be, this building will represent almost the largest employer in town, close to it, if not the most. And so I'm in favor of it. And if it, if it, there can be zero, I mean, if we do this, it can be nobody on the road. Nobody. You know what I mean? This isn't like, oh, we did all this and then there's still some people on the road. There can't be anybody out there. There shouldn't have been anybody out there to begin with. That's just my, that's my two cents worth. It was never designed to have people park on that street. So, but that's, that's how I feel. I, I know it's getting, it's, it's, that lot is full now, jammed. So.
Have you filed with the Conservation Commission?
Not yet. But Goddard is going to do that for us. They have the experience. They were the ones that did the original delineation back 30 years ago.
Okay. Vehically and every other aspect, you're okay?
Yeah. I mean, I, so there has to be a push to get the employees that need to get on the right side for them to walk a country mile down to this farthest spots. And that's hard to do with people. You know what I mean? You have to like impress them somehow to do it.
Well, I understand, but you're talking to somebody who takes public transportation to work and has to walk a mile in every conceivable type of weather to get to the office. And it's great exercise.
It is.
Especially in January when it's 10 below zero.
Jack, while we're on your end of the table, do you have any comments on this?
Yeah, similar concerns Peter has expressed. And I appreciate your comments about walking in the winter. My only concern is that, once again, that the employees will, they can't find a space to have to do offsite parking, will do it rather than say to heck with it, I'm just going to rock out in front again. So somehow the tenants have got to get that enforced. Other than that, you've done a good job here, but for those that, you know, come late or whatever and need a space, they can't park out in front. They have to park in the offsite parking. They're going to have to hoof it.
Nora?
Well, the only question I have is, has fire department seen this new plan?
No, we haven't, we haven't really presented it to the fire department.
I mean, that would, that would be my only concern with the addition parking off to the left is the access. I know there was an issue there this morning, I guess with some smoke in the building.
Another fire.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
And I just want to make sure that they've signed off on this as well. I appreciate everything that you've done. I think you've addressed what we wanted to have addressed. I just want to make sure the fire has signed off on this.
That's interesting.
Does that happen at this stage or does that happen once we submit for?
Well, I don't, it, I'd like to review it with the fire department now. If you're giving your blessing, I'll absolutely do that. We'll, we'll talk to them.
Michelle?
I just, I mean, it's, it's all well and good that he can say that there are, you know, 250 spots needed, but as I stated at the last meeting, it's not misinformation. I'm just going off of the water allocation plan that was submitted to our select board, which shows 300 employees, not 250. So I'd like to see something like documentation that can show us that there really aren't 300 employees. There are in, actually 250 at the largest shift because we have to provide parking for all of these employees. It's dangerous. It's a curvy road. I drove by there this morning. There were 40 vehicles parked alongside that road this morning and on both sides of the road. And that was just at one point this morning when I drove by. And so you're adding 40 additional spaces over on the northeast side and seven over here. So that's only 47 additional. So we're already at 40 and if they're looking to hire, I think they're really going to be still pushing it. So I, I want, I agree with Peter. It's great to have the jobs in town, the business. It's just a matter of, it's safety. I mean, my lord, another fire in the building with all those employees, people parking across the street. It seems like there's really a lot of disregard for safety. And, and you know, you spoke about walking, you know, in the city and in whatever, whether these employees, I'm sure are not getting paid well, well enough to justify, oh, it's worth this walk. You know what I mean? It's, so it's, I'm just, I think we have to see something that validates the 250 spots before we can sign off and say, yes, this meets the required, what our zoning bylaw requires. And that's with this extra density. And do you have a location where you could replicate the wetlands?
That's pretty much the next step. We believe that we have enough room here to do that, which was not part of the delineation. So we, and again, it's replaced at a, a two to one ratio. So for every one that's disturbed, we replace with two. There is actually one point that I forgot to make if it would be okay to make it now.
Go right ahead.
All right. So there was a concern about accessibility for the tenant that's on the west side of the building, Northeast Alternatives. So I've been working with the landlord and with, and they've been working with the tenant and the tenant's architect who is doing the build out. And this particular entrance that exists right here, it's a set of stairs. I believe there's seven stairs. It comes to a landing. This is going to become the main entrance with their expansion. So.
You'll create a ramp?
I won't, but their architect will.
Right. Okay.
Yes. There's a little bit more to it than just a ramp. I don't, because you know, going up seven steps is equivalent to about 49 inches, four feet, something like that. You can go 30 feet without a landing, so you had to find another five feet for a landing. So you're at 53 feet, something along those lines for a length of ramp, which is enormous. What might be better is just to take some space next to that stair and create a mechanical lift, which, which would assist people to get up to that level. I think this, that area, where the stair is and the landing may need to be increased to meet ADA standards. We have to look at the swing of the door and there's a number of other issues as well that would associated, be associated with that. So the lift is probably the least expensive and it would do the exact equivalent thing in less room, less space.
And you're in a tight spot there that would take a parking space or two if you had to go 30 plus feet with a ramp?
Uh, 53 feet.
53 feet.
Uh, we'd lose more than just a couple.
Yeah.
We'd lose a whole bank of them. So we'll work with, continue working with the, the building owner and with the Northeast Alternatives architect to get that resolved as well.
Okay. So I mean, that only becomes a planning board issue outside the building.
You know, ADA compliance, it's a building code issue. However, how you resolve that or how it gets resolved with the building owner and the architect to our previous discussion would be if you lose parking spaces, if you impede something outside the building, if you had to do the ramp. So we're just, we'd want to see a solution to that, just to make sure that it stays a building code issue, not an outside planning issue. Oh, sure. Yeah. I think we would keep you updated, obviously, or keep Mark updated.
Yeah.
On everything that we're doing.
So would anybody else from your group like to, to address us tonight? Or are you guys comfortable with? Myself personally, I think that the changes you've presented to us seem to generally resolve the issue plus or minus that whole, is it 300 employees or is it 250? I'm not going to get into, I think at some point that's going to become an enforcement issue. It's not going to become a site plan review issue. It's, you know, if you have 250 employees, you fill all this space is great. I hope you're prosperous. I hope everything works for everybody. But, you know, we're glad you're back here trying to resolve the issues. We hope that it all gets solved. But if you continue to grow, it becomes a, a you problem, not a us problem. We're going to just have the police department seek enforcement of the offsite parking along the road and we're going to try and wash our hands of it and hope that you find a satellite parking lot somewhere and do something. So in short, my recommendation would be that what you're presented tonight satisfies what we've asked for and we're just going to vote to make a recommendation of some sort to the zoning board of appeals. We would continue our hearing for you to get through the Conservation Commission and the zoning board of appeals to come back to us with a finalized plan.
Okay. That's fair. Appreciate that. But you know, at this point, we're pretty much maxed out and everything we can do with the site.
We squeezed, we, we looked at this in multiple angles. We, you know, we started with 208, squeezed out every, every bit of this. And the challenge with this, as you guys would expect, is that when we go to actual construction documents, it's how we not lose a single one of those parking spots, right? Because we don't have a final buyer retention plan, stormwater detention plan. All those things are variables that reduce our volume of space and make it very constrained. And sometimes we do lose a space here and there. It is, it's my experience that you shoot for as much as you can possibly get, but ultimately you get deducted one or two here and there, I think, because we had to put a storm drain somewhere. We had to adjust a buyer retention. It's inevitable. But this, how many times did we look at this? Four or five different iterations?
At least that many. So we've been working on this since December of last year.
Yeah.
Right. I would imagine with this current plan that we're looking at tonight with the changes, when you put that to drainage and you do all the stormwater calculations, you may create the need for a retention pond or something else that's not on this plan. That's going to be something that we're going to be probably all talking about at the next couple of meetings.
Correct.
That's correct.
Correct. Yeah, we, we know that it's, but we think we're, we're pretty confident we can do it. So that's.
So we just want to let the, the board know that we've looked to squeeze as many spots as we could. It's to our benefits, the building's benefits, to our tenants' benefits. So we're not, I mean, if we could find other 50 spots, we would definitely put it here. It's not, but we just don't have it. We don't have it. We're now encroaching into wetlands. We'll have to do wetland mitigation, which has its own process, as you guys know. So we, we, we hope this satisfies your requirements and we will do the best that we can to, to instruct and to let the tenants know again and enforce the best what we can, parking around the, the perimeter.
All right. Thank you. So I would make a motion that we send a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals that the current plan still requires stormwater management oversight. However, it generally satisfies the parking needs currently.
Second.
Have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to vote no on this.
Okay. So I, motion carries with a majority. Being that we're continuing, you tell me.
Let me talk with my client and see what we can do. It's, it's, will not be the, the next planning meeting. I'd like to actually go back and, and do the stormwater work, talk to Goddard Consultants about the wetland. And then we also need to update Brown and Sardina, our landscape architects.
Yep.
The changes as well. So it's a team effort. It's going to take, you know, at least another month and a half. The stormwater is a big, big deal.
Yep.
To get through. So when is your meeting next in a month and a half?
So we're.
Yep. October 13.
October 13?
A month and a half hours.
Oh, a month and a half hour, not October 13th. Yep.
Okay. If I need to change it, up or down, can I just work with Mark?
Yes. What you would want to do, yeah, call in and if you can make it by the second meeting in September, which would be the fourth Thursday?
29.
29? So if you could make it by the 29th, you need to let him know in advance to get you on the agenda.
Okay.
Usually the agenda is drafted by the Monday before the meeting or at least review. So by, no later than Tuesday at known time, we need to know to get you back on the agenda for that meeting. And if you need to continue, if you're not going to be ready for the October meeting, let us know by close of business that Thursday that you need to continue.
Okay. All right. Terrific. Thank you. I appreciate your comments. We'll do everything we can to, to satisfy everybody's concerns.
Thank you.
Has the city ever considered placing no parking signs on the other side of the street?
We at the planning board have sent a recommendation to the select board. We don't know where that stands with them.
Okay.
So yeah, I mean, it has been considered, but I don't know how far that it's been actually, you know, entertained or just kicked down the road.
Okay. Just, just out of curiosity, there was a question that came up from, from our team as being maybe a more immediate solution.
Yep. I know you can't speak for your tenants, but like, are they ever thinking about going to two shifts or staggering their, their, their times at all?
They already have multiple shifts.
Oh, so that's multiple shifts with those, with those, with those car counts? That's, so there's, there's way more total employees than, than that, correct?
That's where I'm thinking the discrepancy is coming in is that.
I see.
There's a little bit of overlap in, in the shifts, but most of the time.
Possible.
You know, they're just with the shift counts.
Yeah.
Okay. But that's something we'll, we'll work with the tenants to verify.
Yeah, it was parking, no parking signs, but also we noticed the rock bollards out there that is facing that adjacent property.
The, the boulders or the?
The boulders, yeah. Because there's also serving as bollards.
On 375 Kenneth Welch Drive, they put boulders.
Bull, yeah. That's an interesting potential solution as well.
Because there's also a New England detail where they just put the granite bollards.
Right.
Which is.
Well, yeah, boulders serving as bollards, yes.
Yeah. 310 Kenneth Welch sort of had those granite bollards.
Correct.
Back in the day. I don't know if they're still there.
They're still there, but you know, I don't know if they really do much now. I think the boulders is a pretty bold move, to be honest. It tells somebody you need business to not park here.
Well, it's on the, it's on our property, but yeah.
I know, but it sends a strong message.
It's a suggestion.
All right. I appreciate you guys coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
I know Mark wanted to be here and he's had some challenges the last week.
Yeah.
So thank you for coming. We do appreciate it.
You're welcome. So actually I'm going to move to continue this hearing until October 13th at 7:00 PM.
Yep.
Second.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. See you then. And if there's changes, let us know.
Right. Thank you everybody.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next on the agenda is the approved housing survey questions for the housing production plan. Did everybody get a chance to kind of go through this and look at the questions actually?
Yes.
I spoke with Mark earlier today. I spoke with Mark earlier today. I'm gonna try and grab one of these questions just as, uh... Say, question 10. Do you think that that's a, a representative question for the town of Lakeville?
No.
No.
Although, I think the second page, if that's still 10, like the zoning changes, I think that's good questions to ask, possibly, but...
Problem with that is there's too many, too many choices and people just aren't going to, to answer all those choices.
Yeah, I don't know if that's supposed to be question 11, or if that's like 10A and 10B or what, um...
And we have the, the very last one, adopting community preservation. Check that off.
Yep.
So, like, number five, do you feel there are enough senior housing options in town?
That's a good question to ask.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Well, I, so, going back to 10. Do you don't think you could go over to box number four on each one and go down if you didn't like it there? Circle number four? Or circle number five?
You mean, uh, opposed or strongly opposed?
Yeah.
Yeah, you could. You could leave it in there, I don't wanna take any, um, I, I, I think I know how the town would, would go in that direction, but I'm not gonna speak for them, you know?
Well, that's, that, that's my point of it, I just wanted to touch base on it.
Yep.
I wanted, I don't wanna go through this question by question. I know everybody looked at it, but I'm just bringing it up again per my discussion with Mark today, that these may not seem appropriate to Lakeville.
Yeah.
That's why I brought that one up. However, if you don't think it is, you have the option of saying, "I oppose." Uh, so, if that's the case, and you feel like if, as long as there's an option to oppose, if you didn't agree with it, can we leave those questions in there or do we wanna strike them from it?
I think you could leave them in there, the, the last one is a bit confusing.
You could oppose it.
Right, they could just oppose it.
Right. I mean, we can leave it in, I'm just concerned about how many parts are, are question number 10.
Yeah, 10's a, a challenge.
In, in my experience in doing these type of surveys, uh, you're, you're not gonna get a lot of responses at all on number 10 because it's just too many choices, too many, too many issues, too many parts.
I wish Mark was here, um, is this very standard, I wonder? And, not you, Mark, uh, Resnick, um, cause I don't know if this is just a standard format because I don't know if Mansfield is close enough resembling Lakeville, if there's maybe a better, or other options that we could look at.
He actually said Mansfield would more resemble Middleborough.
Yeah.
From, uh, size and, I don't know if demographics is the right word, but the structure of the community with a small downtown area that's a defined downtown area that Lakeville doesn't really have. Lakeville was really more of always a bedroom community, not...
Farming.
A little municipality.
Yeah.
I mean, I suppose, Mark, that there's not any issue with really leaving it in as long as our expectation is pretty low on question 10.
Yeah.
On the type of responses we'll give it.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be very difficult for some people to respond to.
I think, I think 10 is better addressed with four and five.
I think I would've just rather had a little more time to look at other towns to, to make a comparison, which I didn't do.
So, I mean, you could do that, we don't have to, uh, close this out tonight. We, so it needs to be done by the end of September.
Right.
We could continue this until the first meeting in September. With comments, though, I think, you know, we want comments to go back to Mark.
Right. Just to make sure we're covering all the bases and we don't miss out any, uh, on any good questions that maybe we should ask.
Yep. So, I guess the challenge would be looking for a town that you feel more resembles the town of Lakeville demographically and geog- geographically. Uh, and then see if they've done a housing production plan to, to be able to capture that. Uh, so I don't know how much work that would be, if that's...
Shouldn't be too much. Yeah, but I'll look for some and see if I can find any ones that I think are worth sending out to the group, the board.
So, is it safe for me to say that the planning board would like to see a, a housing production plan survey from a town that more resembles Lakeville?
Yeah, that's accurate.
Yes, yeah.
I think it's pretty good, I just think that, uh, we're a bit more rural than Mansfield.
So, Mansfield doesn't have a defined downtown unit, like Middleborough does, do they?
Mansfield?
Yeah.
Yeah, they have a very nice downtown, yeah. Yep. Town hall, like, you know, the police station that works.
So...
And I guess the only other comment, Mark, is that there's some way to simplify them at number 10. So, there's not as many options. Even if, even if it means separating them into another question.
Yeah. Yeah, it's almost like, is that a 10, 11? There's so many dots there, the page break, we don't know, cause some of the...
Maybe the zoning changes become a separate question.
Yeah, to me, it almost looks like there should've been another question there.
Right.
If it's unrelated, once you turn the page, like it got cut off. So, all right, we, so we'll send that recommendation to Mark and hopefully by the first meeting in September, he can have another option. I mean, at that point, if you just find when it's already done, we can just look at that and hopefully approve it, send it to Serped to do that. So, item three on the agenda tonight, discussion and action on possible articles for Fall Town Meeting, which was some modifying setbacks and lot coverage in the Business Industrial Zone. We discussed that at the last meeting. Uh, we just met a quorum, so we didn't really wanna make any action. Uh, and where Mark's not tonight, here tonight, I'm gonna just recommend that we continue that to the next meeting. The warrant doesn't open until after the next meeting and it'll probably be open for two weeks. So, we do have time and I'm gonna say the same thing on the industrial district reservations, excuse me. Everybody good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Uh, so, I'm gonna call that a motion if I could get a second to continue until the first meeting in September. I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Till... Is that September 13th? Or is that...
The next one, September 8th.
Eight?
Yeah.
Eighth. Okay.
Uh, so, we have zoning board of appeals petitions for La Barron Residence LLC, continue, and Scott, Nine Rush Pond Road. Does anybody have any comments that we wanna send to the zoning board of appeals for the La Barron project?
I do, but of course I need to use myself, right?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, technically on a vote, Jack, you, you, you live in there, I think.
I went to the appeals board meeting the other night, there was about 100 people there that were, had some very strong feelings about, oh, phase five, phase six.
The folks were up in arms, it sounded like.
Well, you know, it, they're concerned with the new construction there, that she brought to your right. Uh, it's totally out of character for the rest of the whole complex. Those two buildings are across from the single-family homes. These people have six, seven, eight hundred, a quarter million dollar homes down there. And they're opposed to looking out and seeing that. What they want is something that's more in line with the overall. If you look at La Barron Hills, it has that gray and white, you know, colonial look like that, like my house.
It's sorta like Barbara always said, to stick within the rural character of Lakeville.
It is.
And so, they're looking for, let's stick within the character of the rest of La Barron.
I don't have a problem with it because I'm up in the cottages, so I don't have a problem. You, you know, it's not my problem. If, if you're a single-family home people down the estates, they're the ones that have the problem and they're, you know, first of all, as you guys will know, these, a lot of people come to these meetings, they're totally unfamiliar with 40B housing, they have a section eight. And they're, it, the guy that's sitting next to me, he says, "I'm totally opposed to this because we're gonna get people in there that are not in character with our own kind of people, we're gonna get all kind of riffraff and this, that, on and on and on and on and on." Uh, Mohammed get, get up and made a, I thought, a very good presentation. He explained to, and the, our lawyer was there and she got up and explained to it as well. And so, that, I think, quieted a good number of the people down. Uh, there was concern that there was enough sewerage system and a water treatment system to accommodate it. And Mohammed said, "We have 40,000 gallons a day and we're only using 14." And he's willing to put in a new water treatment and sewerage system for those buildings right there. So, I think it really came down to, and then now he wants to make Fern Road, Fern Avenue, a, a, a formal road rather than right now is, he's got it all graded and everything, but he wants to make that a third access, uh, egress for, uh, La Barron Hills. And I don't, can't imagine anybody being opposed to that. Then they went into this big long harangu about, you know, putting up a gate and then putting up, uh, speed bumps and all this kinda stuff. And he's got it so it's a, he comes in and it's a, it's a roundabout that it comes down. So, I mean, and, you know, what, once again, I mean, you guys have been through enough of these meetings and you heard some of these people, if some of these people are totally ignorant of what's going on and they're just spouting stuff up. So, anyways, main concern is that building right there, those three buildings. That they're that high and they're that color and that construction. Now, I guess the question is that I, you know, I voiced and most other people voiced, "Why can't those buildings be made compatible with whatever everything else?" Yeah, if you notice, he's putting those other buildings down, uh, next to, to the fairways, which are four buildings gonna be in a, in a group facing each other. And they're compatible with the architecture of La Barron. Why can't those? Now, if the answer is, "Because we can't do 40B housing and make it in a, in a, in a style that's cost-effective," I find that hard to believe. That wasn't, that voice, that question was never, or that response was never made by Mohammed. But I, to me, I'm totally opposed to that. Other than that, it's the rest of his presentation I thought was fine. I, I think he's done a good job, Fern addressed all the issues, but that, to me, is totally out of character.
Yeah. Thank you, Jack. Anybody else?
I have a few. Um, well, so I think one of the women that spoke, she did address the, um, previous comprehensive permit granted back in 2018. And she mentioned sidewalks that were supposed to be provided. And I guess there was some sort of discussion between the developer and certain members in town hall, um, about taking a $300,000 payment in lieu of the sidewalks. So, um, you know, hearing that sidewalks would be forever and it would be, you know, benefit to those 55-plus, um, seniors or members that, uh, were waiting or hoping for that to happen, uh, to connect it to the senior center. Um, 300,000 goes really quick when you're talking about town budget. Um, so I think, you know, the sidewalks would be more valuable.
So, they want a sidewalk that goes from La Barron to all those senior centers?
So, uh, from...
That's what, a mile?
From the previous comprehensive permit that was...
It was already negotiated.
Built into it.
I think.
Mohammed already agreed to that.
Yeah, so the developer should, I think, before the zoning board were to, um, make any more allowances for this developer, I think they should make good on the current, um, the, the standing, um, permit that they have, um, including those sidewalks. And then I sent out an email with some information that I had gotten, um, from Nate. And I thought it was very interesting when you look at, um, it says other state harbors. And, uh, it lists a municipality which has between, uh, 2,500 and 5,000 housing units with a 200-unit cap. So, it says, "Large-scale projects, ZBA has discretion to reject projects exceeding thresholds based on number of units or percentage of total housing units, depending on the size of the community." So, if you look on the Department of Housing and Community Development, or DHCD, um, as of December 21st, 2020, they have Lakeville on record having 3,852 units. So, we would have a 200-unit cap. So, I'm wondering why this hasn't been, um, mentioned before? I don't know if I've missed it in the past, um, but I, I think that's something worth looking into.
Is that 200 units per year?
I was thinking it was 200, um, because it says, "Projects exceeding thresholds based on number of units." So, if it's a project, it sounds like a project.
Singular project, so as many phases as you stretch it out to, it's still a project.
Right, that's what, that's how I was reading it or interpreting it. So, I think that's something...
This is five and six.
Worth sending on to them. And I know we've talked about that, uh, 1.5 buildable land area minimum. Um, I'm still, you know, working on getting numbers together for that as well, hoping to, you know, pass on to them as well. And then, you know, I, I heard a lot of, um, concerns about residents who have heard a lot of promises. I heard tennis courts, swimming pools, I've heard plantings that have, um, just been planted and then died. Um, also, they're storing, um, building materials out in the open, they have a storage container down there. Um, there's no screening between these units and they're very close. So, I think, um, those are all, um, those are all issues that should be addressed. And I know the ZBA is very limited because it is a comprehensive permit, it goes through the state DHCD. I would just recommend, um, that any residents that are interested go on to the DHCD legal resources because the developer is, um, you know, they also have all these certifications, certifications for the developer to meet and criteria. So, if there are issues, then, uh, they should be reported, um, to the proper department that permits this 40B. So, that, that would just be my recommendation to the residents there, if anyone's watching.
I mean, I can speak to some of the issues that Michelle just brought up. It's a key, it's been a, it's an overriding concern in La Barron, they, they never finish anything. The landscaping, the irrigation system has never been correctly functioning for two years. You, you know, they, they build a beautiful home, they build beautiful homes, there's no two, it's one of the best homes, and I've been in Pine Hills for 12 years and these guys make a better home. But when it comes to outside, the landscaping and the irrigation and all of that, it's, we, we have a homeowner's patio out there next, if you're familiar with the area, that has been unfinished. He puts up the wall, he puts down the...
Jack, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut you off there. I just, I don't think that, I, I feel like we're veering from phase five and ph- phase six. And I know that you, you're talking about a track record, uh, and that, that may be a valid point, but I also don't wanna drag them through the mud on something that's not part of this recommendation.
I agree.
Uh, so, so, and again, sorry, not to cut you off, Jack, but, but would you make a recommendation out of, or add to a recommendation out of some of what you have there, Michelle?
Um, for ZBA, I would recommend, um, that they, well, I'd, I'd like to be able to forward this to them, that, that I had emailed to everyone, that slideshow.
I think you need to call out that 200, uh, unit cap.
Right, yeah. To them. And, and just see what, what is town council's opinion on that? Has anyone looked into this? That was the first I had heard of it, you know, seeing that, so, um, I think that's worth, um, sending over to ZBA. And, um, like I mentioned, I don't know what they can do as far as condition for screening, um, or even for, uh...
What does screen mean?
Between the buildings, adding some additional plantings or something that gives some privacy screening.
They're talking like evergreen?
Something that, that they're not, I mean, if, if a concern is that they're going to see all, all these new units, is there any way of doing it in such a way that the landscape will properly screen it? And then, you know, like the, the junk storage outside, I don't think residents, so, you know, these are for sale units, but the developer is still building on.
Yeah, but that's going to be five, if phase five is going, he's taking all that stuff out of there and he's putting those four buildings right there.
Right, so, so
That's going to be removed, obviously.
Yeah, but, so I'm just saying, anything that's sort of building materials sitting out in the open, I don't think that's proper storage.
That's been there for two years.
Right, so I don't know if they could do anything about that.
The only thing they could do would be like a condition.
Yeah, but I know the conditions are limited, so I don't know if that's within the scope. Because that, to me, is not a financial stream. It's more of just
A visual.
A visual. And I know ZBA was talking about all the peer reviews. That's excellent. I know Concom brought up the wetlands and they're going to be looking at this as well. So I think they're going to do a good job on, with the peer review from what it sounds. Oh, and the sidewalks. I, I did think that they should hold them to their current comprehensive permit, rather than allow additional units before phase, certain phases have been completed. They should not be moving on to additional phases.
Okay, so I move that we recommend that the character and design of the village at La Barron's Phase Five should match the character and design of the rest of La Barron residences. And that the height of the buildings exceeds the allowable 35 feet and that no variance for the height be granted. In addition, that the sidewalks that were part of the original comprehensive, comprehensive permit be installed and additional mitigation be sought for phase five and phase six, if possible.
Michael, I can interject. The, the character for phase five is fine. It's the character for phase six that's not.
No, it isn't. No, it isn't. You've got them backwards.
Okay.
I'm just looking at the, the title on this plan.
Okay.
Transposing it to the title on what says phase five and then phase six.
Standing corrected.
No, you might be right. They have them both titled with the same name.
That the one in your right hand is going in last.
So again, it would be the villages at La Barron Hills, whatever phase that is.
That's supposed to be the last phase. That's phase six, supposed to be phase six. Phase five is the one that's going in that, all that area that Michelle was talking about where he keeps all of his supplies, it's laying all over the place. That's the one that's next to the fairways. Spot right after the fairways is the one that's more in character with La Barron. The one in your right hand is phase six.
The phase five is three 10-unit buildings and one five-unit building.
Well, disregard what I say. Go by the, what's on the papers and see what happens.
Yeah, so it's phase six because it is, calls out four-story red in the plan.
Mm-hmm.
The big complaint about the, the estates people that's
So I amend the motions that I say it's phase six rather than phase five in the motion that I made. Would anybody add to that?
I'd add some, the junk to be properly stored or the building materials to be properly stored.
I don't, I think that's sort of outside of
Well, it's going away anyway. That's where phase five is going.
And how about anything for screening? Can we request screening? Because usually we would see a landscape plan.
They have one. They did get a landscape plan.
Oh, they did?
Yeah. It's the first time since construction started there that the zoning board of appeals actually requested one.
Okay.
So they are working on that.
Okay.
When do they see this again? September?
Yeah.
So I think you, you got it covered unless anybody else wanted to add.
No, that sounds good.
Second.
Have a second? Was that a second?
Yes.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll send that recommendation to Kathy to forward to the zoning board of appeals. Nine Rush Pond Road. Gentleman wants to put a shed within his front setback. I believe that we don't want to comment on that.
No comment.
Make a motion to not comment on Nine Rush Pond Road.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next meeting will be September 8th at 7:00 p.m. 2022 at the Lakeville Police Station. Anybody else have any other business? I did speak to Kathy today. She had the minutes for the joint meeting put together, but then she noticed a glitch. So rather than give us incorrect minutes, she has taken them back so that she would have them corrected for the next meeting. So no, no minutes currently, being that there's no other business. I'll extend a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.